Welcome, everyone, to the January 27 City Council Work Session. Before we get into the work session topics, you all had a request from Councilors Alenka to not pass any motions today. Anybody object to that?
Yes.
Questions about that, but might be able to cover that during the discussion, but at this point, I would say I object.
Okay. So that would call for a vote, then, I suppose, because that's the way we've handled it in the past, I think, on a rare occasion when that has occurred. So, all of those in favor of, I guess I'm not the one to put the motion up.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is there a discussion on that?
I think you could have, I would say, two things. One is, I think you can have discussion on the topic, whether we pass a motion or not today, so that's one thing, and you can certainly have discussion about whether or not to do the motion if you desire. That's your choice.
Madam Mayor, my question is not about the contents of the motion, except what postponing would do to the timeline if we decide to move forward with the...
So why don't we ask that up front? John, can you, or anybody else, can you answer that? If they postpone it, is it going to be a problem for us?
It wouldn't be a problem as long as you gave initial direction at your next meeting, February 8th. So you don't, so if, for example, George, this, the motion, your intended motion was the one you're talking about, if the council passed that on February 8th, that would not pose an impediment. If you took a couple of weeks after that, and you wound up doing something like this, that could be a problem, but not passing it today is not a problem.
Let me ask you this, then, and it might be a kind of a roundabout way of doing this. If I were to put the motion out, get a second, then immediately table, put a motion out to table until our next meeting, is that a more definite way of getting it back on the agenda? Because I know this is sort of time-sensitive issue.
If you, right, and so what you would do, then, is you would move to postpone to the February 8th meeting, and then that would ensure that it came up at the February 8th meeting.
Okay. All right, then, I think that's what I would do.
For the next meeting? I'm sorry.
This is Alan, I'd like to make a call.
So Alan, we're in the midst of talking about your, you asking the council not to move on a motion today. We're in the middle of that discussion.
And Mayor, what I was just explaining to George is that if he wanted to ensure that this came back up on February 8th, one way to do that is if he made the motion, got a second, and then somebody immediately moved to postpone to the February 8th meeting, then that would have to be on the agenda for February 8th.
Okay, perfect. Did you have something you wanted to say, Mike?
I do. It was process-oriented, but I was just absorbing what he said. I typically understand the request not to act as a reasonable one when a councillor can't be present, and Alan's present. So, I'm wondering why we're doing that, first of all, but I suppose it still requires a vote to table without a discussion.
Without discussion.
I'll live with it for now. Thank you.
Okay, so somebody, yes, Chris?
Just a, I had just a question about process. If we were to move this motion and approve it, or table it, when it comes back up, we can still go through the regular process of changing it or amending it. My point being, the actual items on the list, I may want to consider or reconsider, but if we table it and bring it back up, we could still talk about the actual items on the list. Okay.
Alan, did you have something you wanted to say about this?
Yeah, the reason I made that request is because I couldn't attend the entire meeting, the full hour and a half. I only have about 45 minutes, and if we were able to come to conclusion in that 45 minutes, that would be fine, maybe we could ask, but I kind of don't think that's going to happen. That's why I made the request.
Okay. So, what's your preference, George?
I would prefer to go ahead and make the motion, and then move to table.
Okay, all right. So go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I move to direct the city manager to prepare for council discussion a draft of an amendment to the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan. The draft amendment should include as possible projects, high-speed fiber, downtown parks slash open spaces, and three-year, and number three, year-round farmer's market. Also, would direct the city manager to bring wording back so it gets on the November ballot.
Okay. So we need a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and...
Somebody moves to table.
Moved to table to the February 8th meeting.
Okay.
Is that to postpone or table? Technically, it's a motion to postpone to the February 8th meeting.
Postpone to February 8th meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so if that means that we're...
Voting to postpone.
Voting about postponing. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Councilor Zelenka?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes, so it's table, postponed until our next meeting. All right. Now, we're ready to talk about downtown improvements. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we had two topics, and the first is some follow-up onto the downtown forum, and then if you want to continue the conversation around this, we can flip those, depending on if...
Now, let's do the forum first to inform the other discussions.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right. Hi, I'm Sarah Madera, Assistant City Manager, and we're just going to give a really brief presentation. We were scheduled to give it last week, and as you know, your conversation about downtown improvements didn't allow that to happen, but we thought it was important because there's one thing, regardless if you're talking about the park blocks, or Broadway Plaza, or Holt Center, one thing that kind of ties all these places together is the experiences people have when they're there and how they experience them, which was a large focus of the Downtown Solutions Forum. Information was in your packet, but we thought it would be helpful to just give a couple of quick highlights of that and give you an opportunity to ask questions. The words that are up on the screen in front of you are just really the quickest snapshot of the things we heard that night at the forum. As you can see, there was a lot of interest in downtown and public space, Keesey and other things, the park blocks. The idea of the Solutions Forum really emerged last fall during a heightened community conversation regarding concerns about behavior, safety, cleanliness, and what could be, what could be done, that's kind of a key word, to continue improving the conditions and experience for everybody in our downtown. The mayor and councillors Cyret and Pryor formed a subcommittee, and they worked with members of the executive team, executive team and the city staff team, to plan an event that would really kind of hit four main things. The first one was to welcome partition, participation by everybody. We wanted to identify a shared vision of downtown spaces and a shared understanding of the challenges and opportunities that were ahead of us to achieve that. We wanted to make sure that everybody had a common awareness of kind of the legal parameters that, that kind of frame the things that we can do, and also identify the top kind of three to five actions we could, we could get going quicker to improve things for people in the downtown. The key guiding principles put in place by the subcommittee was to hold a safe, inclusive, and positive event. Positive was a word we heard a lot, so we'd like to share the very short, less than three-minute video we used to start things off.
That's your job. I'm Kitty Piercy, Mayor of Eugene. We all love Eugene. We all care about downtown. We've asked some folks to share their experiences in our downtown, and we're going to hear from them. My name is Ginger Fivefeel, and I live at the Tate on Olive Street, which is downtown. What I like about downtown Eugene is the accessibility to a movie theater, which I love, the walkability, shopping down here, the restaurants that are downtown, and a library, the Holt Center, the shed, all the arts are downtown, and I walk to all of them.
My name is Garrett Dunleavy. I'm a business owner downtown. In Eugene, it has this air about it that's youthful, it's ambitious, it's all the things that you would expect to see in a hippie community that became totally developed.
What I like about downtown is that I think of it as the community living room. I think of it as a place where we can all come together as a community. I think right now, we're sort of wrestling with how do we make our public spaces feel good and safe to everyone, and certainly, we want that to be the case, because public space does belong to all of us.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Hunt. I'm the board president for Occupy Medical in Eugene. Not being able to help people sometimes, that's the most frustrating thing, and especially our youth, who have been turned away by their parents and by the community.
My name is Merrill George. What brought me to Eugene was people talked about Eugene, and they say how good Eugene was. It's hard to explain being homeless, because there's a lot of needs that people want, so I really can't say how to address things like this, you know, being homeless, it's hard being homeless.
We need to help teach people that these are our kids, these are our veterans, these are people who are a part of our community, who have gone through horrible, horrible times, and are in survival mode, and by reaching out, by talking to these people, by helping, I believe that we can possibly come together on this, and I love what's happening downtown, but we really need to start working together.
My greatest hope for downtown Eugene is to continue on the path they've been continuing. When I first came to Eugene, there were pits downtown and parking lots, and now there's some nice buildings, usable space, lots and lots of activity, I think ambience, and I think we should just continue working on that effort, but it's going to take community support to do that.
Even for myself, there are things that I want to get up in arms about, because I think it's a big deal, but it's a big deal for me, but ultimately, if we as a community are able to see that all of these goals that we have are common, I think it would be a lot easier to get past some of these smaller arguments, some of the smaller debates, and work together collaboratively on something that is bigger than all of us. It's the future of the city.
We all care about Eugene. We all care about our downtown. We have to work on having it be a good and safe place for everyone in our downtown. We believe that we can do that, we have the capacity, we have people who care, people who can come up with good solutions. We invite you to be part of that, and we look forward to hearing from you.
My name's Laura Hammond, and I work in the Planning Development Department, and I was on a team that helped work with the subcommittee and the exec team to plan the event, so I'll just share a little bit more about what the event was and what we heard. So, we know we had over 150 participants at the event, because that's how many people could fit in the room we had, and we actually had to do some overflow space across the street in the atrium lobby to accommodate additional groups. There are about 20 small groups, and eight to 10 people in each group, and they were facilitated by a city staff member. The groups were asked to discuss their vision for downtown, and then share their ideas on what would help improve how we can share our spaces downtown together. The facilitators noted these ideas, and then there was a prioritization process where folks got to vote on their top three priorities for next-step actions. At the end, each group got to report back to the larger group on what their priorities were. And, as you can imagine, with such a large group of diverse participants, we got a lot of ideas. Close to 400 ideas from the event were listed, and those are all available in your attachment A. We also provided an online survey for people to respond to who couldn't be at the event, and we had 22 responses to that that were also included in attachment A of your packet. From all of those ideas, about 100 priorities were identified, and those were reviewed, and several themes emerged. One of the first, we called the Big Idea Theme, and this really tried to capture some of the larger visions for downtown. It included things like developing the e-web property, or even undergrounding the railroad and putting a park on the top of the tracks. Next was the Health Theme. The idea of public restrooms made a strong showing in this category, as did sanitation issues, more trash receptacles, waste bins, and creating more smoke and tobacco-free areas in downtown. The theme of parks, plazas, and facilities included ideas around some type of downtown facility, either a community center, maybe a resource or information center. Improvements to the farmer's market and the park blocks came up under this category, as did improvements to Keesey Square, either through programming or redesigning the space. Programming was another priority theme all of itself. This was really looking at ways we can make our downtown spaces more active, either through events or installations. Public safety and behaviors focused on the presence of public safety officers downtown, as well as ideas around rules and expectations for behaviors in public spaces. The theme of services included a number of ideas around a shelter or day center for people who are experiencing homelessness, increased mental health services, outreach workers in the downtown, and alternatives to panhandling, like a short-term job posting board, or opportunities, or donation stations, or parking meters. Finally, the welcoming amenities and what we called Fun Category included ideas around making our downtown more inviting, either by adding seating or lighting, drawing more families and kids downtown through play structures, or even a merry-go-round. The full list of all the priorities that came up under all the themes is available in attachment B, and we've shared those on our Downtown Solutions website, as well as with the participants who signed up for an Interested Parties list.
That's kind of the highest level of information that we got, and I guess a lot of people have asked me since the event, was there any new ideas? Was there kind of that silver bullet that people talk about? And what I have shared with people is, there wasn't any, other than maybe the merry-go-round idea in downtown, I don't think there was anything really earth-shattering new, like that's, that's the thing that's going to change downtown, but I think what was really new, and what others can share, is that of the 150 people that was in the room, every single person had their voice heard. Everyone was, you know, facilitated, everybody shared, and there was a sense of, I guess I would say, I felt a different sense of people ready to kind of come forward and take responsibility for their downtown and their downtown public spaces in a way that I haven't ever before in any of our community engagement. It was really a different kind of energy in the room, so I think, to that extent, that's kind of carried on, as you experienced even as recently as Monday night, that there seems to be an outpouring of community desire to talk about this, and hopefully to also kind of follow through with some of those solutions. Next steps for us is we've been continuing to work with the subcommittee that includes the mayor and councillors, and we are going through sort of the sort of the highest level ideas in terms of trying to put them in, what are the things that we already have policy direction on but may need resources, what are the things that we don't have policy direction on but we might have resources, and which ones kind of hit both of those marks. Our hope is to kind of come back with them and have kind of a list of the top three to five, or maybe 10, items that we want to start pursuing. A lot of them are actually underway as pilots, so for example, you hear a lot about restrooms. We do have more restrooms than we did, but clearly, we're still hearing it's not, it's not enough, and so with that, I guess I'd like to ask the mayor and councillor Cyret and Pryor if you have something you want to add, and also councillor Taylor was also in attendance at the event as well, I believe that was...
Chris, do you have anything you want to add to this?
No, just other than I was really pleased at the turnout. I was not able to actually be there. I was out of town, but I have looked at the material and talked with those that were there, and I was very pleased with the process, and I know some folks were looking for the opportunity to talk about the negatives, as well as the positives. I don't think they were discouraged from doing that, but as the video shows, we're trying to be proactive in our solutions and positive, and I think that was the tone that we really wanted to try to strike, and I'm glad to see that following through. I would be suspicious if there was a silver magic bullet solution, because silver magic bullet solutions tend by their very nature to be controversial, and I think getting there incrementally is really the best solution, and a lot of the ideas being presented were incremental ways we can get to a downtown where everybody can enjoy and feel safe.
Claire?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I was also very impressed and gratified by the turnout, and really appreciated the work of staff to put on what I thought was a very successful forum with a lot of people, and I went into the overflow room, and I think we had three or four tables full of people there, too, and I was most impressed by the fact that we had such a mix of folks from all parts of our community. We had the head of the Chamber of Commerce, we had folks who live in our rest stops, we have folks who hang out at Keesey Square. I think it was very representative of all the different variety of folks who have an interest in downtown being a place that they can feel welcome, they can feel like it's their living room, as the mayor puts it. And for me, it was a really important opportunity to check in with folks who care about downtown, affirm that there is a real interest in seeing improvements down there, and for us to step on, into that work in a collaborative way. I wouldn't want to have us march off in a direction, as council, or even our small task force, that wasn't going to be supported by folks who actually are going downtown to live, to work, to be entertained, so for me, that was a real value of the forum, and I do have some specific things to respond to when we go into rounds that came out of what we heard from folks.
Eddie, did you have anything you wanted?
Yes, I was there. I didn't go to the overflow place, but I stayed in the, and I didn't sit at a table. I circulated and talked to lots of people, and heard what people were saying at lots of different tables, and the two big things I heard, which I think there's been an effort to, to ignore in a sense, one of them, but Keesey Square, every place I went, people said, "Don't get rid of Keesey Square." And the other biggest thing was restrooms, and I don't think they meant porta potties.
Right.
I certainly don't think porta potties satisfy the need for, I think what the mayor has been saying about the Portland Lou is something that we should consider, something clean and, and clean and safe and, and available.
I certainly concur that those were two of the big topics that we heard.
Keesey was definitely a huge topic, because people are worried that we might sell it. Thank you.
So, I've got, now we'll go into the queue. People have comments or questions they want to ask, and so, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for all the work on this. It's a big problem. It's a thing to deal with. It's important. I heard what Claire said, and I was not there for the forum, so it occurs to me that some of the actions we'll take will be based on recommendations of what occurred there, and based on some of the information that was gathered, and it seems, because I wasn't there, we're being asked to trust that the room and the participants and the information gathered was representative of the community as a whole. So, because I didn't see that, and I, I'm not sure I often agree with some of our processes here of being as representative as I might like them to be, how would you assure me that it was representative, a group of our community?
I don't know that I could, you know, meet the assurance that it represents what you would, could say, what you would say as community as a whole.
Think it was?
I would say, I think it was a very broad spectrum of people, not, that don't always come. There was a lot of people in the room that I didn't know, but I didn't go, you know, around person to person and ask them who they were and who they represented. It was, it was a pretty good collection of downtown interested parties, but, you know, if you mapped it out on a map, it's, it's possible that there wasn't a lot of people from far north Eugene. I don't know that to be true, so it'd be hard to answer that.
Well, I just want to agree on these terms up front. Are we gonna, are we gonna be asked to consider that a representative group of the community?
I don't think you'll be asked to consider that, from my perspective, any more than you would any community engagement we do in a public forum. We'll, we'll present the information and kind of the, you know, who was there and...
Well, the reason I ask that is because that's often the kind of, you know, unwritten discussion basis that we have at this table, and that makes sense. It actually seems really reasonable to have, when you have that sort of a forum, to get something that's truly representative of the community as a whole, in order to have a larger selection of ideas to draw from, and that makes a lot of sense to me, but what I want to do is avoid us getting into a discussion that this group was representative of the community as a whole, unless you are comfortable saying that and telling us why. Okay.
I guess my comment would be that I think it would be very, no matter what group you put together, it'd probably be somebody who said that's not representative of the community as a whole, because we all have different notions about what representation of community as a whole is, and I guess, I thought you would finish.
I'm sorry, I wasn't. I'll wait till the next round, that's fine.
And I would say that I do want people to know, we've had this discussion, this is just simply input. It was opening it up to the community and saying, "Those who want to, come and tell us what you want us to hear," and we take it as that, and we've added to it what we've gotten in phone calls. I've asked them to look at what we've gotten by email, just kind of pouring all that information that we've got in a pot, and then coming back and telling you what we've heard from the people who've chosen to be heard from, and is there something in there that you think that we should be taking action on? So I don't think these things come, you can certainly clarify if you have a different idea, but I, I don't think these things come as our recommendations. They come as information to put into the pot, to think about in trying to move the dial on having our, our public spaces be a good experience for everyone.
Concur.
And Claire, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I didn't mean to imply that, that the folks at the forum represent every potential view. I think we're the representative group.
I do, too.
So, you know, I think the intent is to bring back to this council recommendations that would be acted upon, and not to silo that in some way, but I think it was really valuable to hear from the interested folks who were willing to come out on an evening and, and share their ideas, and I think it worked well for that purpose. And, you know, Keesey Square was definitely a significant topic, and we're continuing to hear from folks, so, about that, and talk about that, so I don't really think it's fair to say that it's been ignored as a topic. We were there until 10 o'clock on the other night, listening to folks talk about Keesey Square. So some of the things that I took away, or wanted to highlight from the forum and other conversations around downtown, I think, you know, we heard a lot about benches, not just at Keesey Square, but in other places around downtown, as being an amenity that's really missing and needed, particularly now that we have more folks living downtown, and we also have elderly folks living downtown. I, I think we need to pursue that idea. Improved lighting, so people feel safe. I absolutely agree with councillor Taylor about the safe and accessible restrooms. The porta potties are a stopgap measure. They're ugly, they're awkward, they're not permanent. The bathrooms in the parades are, as far as I'm concerned, scary, and as a public person, I would not like, feel comfortable using them. They don't make you feel secure, particularly as a woman, so I think we have some, a work to do to invest in better, safe, accessible restrooms downtown. I am interested in the idea of pursuing some kind of downtown docent, or we could call them guide, but we already have a group of folks with that name who aren't really serving the purpose I have in mind, which is to provide connections to folks, maybe to social services or information about events. Also, signage encouraging respectful behaviors and interactions downtown. This is something that Land County Public Health has started for parts of Whittaker, where we have a concentration of breweries and pubs to encourage respectful behavior towards the neighborhood. And then, dog waste stations. I recently visited Bend and a certain part of their town. They had dog waste stations all over the place, because they obviously wanted you to pick up after your dog. The mayor's always telling us, if we want a certain outcome, we need to encourage people to do that, and for me, that's a really obvious way to do that, and I would like a second round, Mayor.
Hi, George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. It was my understanding that this meeting, we were supposed to talk about funding options for the downtown fiber project and parks.
Part of the meeting.
The second part of the meeting. Well, I, we, that is going to be a deep conversation. There's lots of options out there, and we've already kind of fast-tracked a motion for the, you know, let's, hey, let's have Urban Renewal pay for all of it. It's much more complex than that. We've had all this information was sent to us last week. I looked it over. We've spent half an hour on going over stuff that we should already have been familiar with. I don't see how any of this adds to the, the meat of the matter, which is how are we going to pay for all this? I didn't hear any, or read any suggestions of how we're going to pay for all this, so I'm not saying the meeting was not, didn't have value. I'm not saying that at all. I think it did, but it's not related to our main task, is to figure out an equitable way, fiscally responsible way to pay for the fiber optic. Now, I'm going to separate that from the park thing, because when you, once you... Now, I'm going to separate that from the park thing, because when you, once you mix too many things together, it gets so nebulous, and it's much better to separate out things and look at what we can do, instead of have this huge aspirational list, and this is how much it's going to cost, and this is how much, how many years we have to extend the urban renewal downtown, and this is, without a list of firm projects that people know are actually going to get accomplished. And so I really would like to see the conversation go back to the main event here, which is how are we going to pay for all this? This is so peripheral, it's not, it's not getting us anything, it's not adding any new information. So I won't need to be in every single round. I suggest that we just kind of like cut this off and get back to the real work, which is, what is a sensible way to pay for it? Let's prioritize, let's us prioritize and decide how we're going to pay for this, because we've already used half an hour of something that really didn't move anything forward. And, you know, and that just leaves us even less time to talk about the main event. And I think we're kind of wasting our time on this topic, sorry, to put it that way, but I think we need to get back and talk about the nuts and bolts, because we haven't even explored all the options yet. And here's the motion already made up for two weeks from now, like, oh, this is the way we're going to do it. We haven't explored all the options. We need to have the conversation about the full faith and credit bond, how that's going to be paid for. That's one of the options.
George?
Yeah, and of course, council can choose however you want to spend the time. This topic was actually, as part of a scheduled work session a couple of weeks ago, our thinking has been, there are several moving pieces in and around the downtown that are currently being explored. This is one of those pieces. Obviously, Keyzee Plaza is an important part, Parks Blocks, Telecom, and all of those are important pieces. And so what we have been just trying to do is provide information about all those moving pieces, because there are several potential decisions you'll want to make, and we just think as you have all the information, it might be easier to make whatever individual decision you make out of that. So that was our intent with this.
So in the queue, we have three more for the first round and two for second round. Greg.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. One thing I will take issue with is that silver bullets are usually used to kill werewolves, and our downtown is not reached werewolf status yet. So just to note, lighten up a little bit on this. One of the things that, you know, kind of struck me about the, you know, conversation, so to speak, and I didn't have a chance to attend that, is that maybe we should look a little deeper in terms of how we are mining and soliciting our feedback from our community, our entire community. I think that this is an opportunity for us to have a more social scientific approach. We need to have focus groups. That meeting is not a focus group. We don't have a focus group. We haven't taken surveys of the community around the issue yet, and we don't have, you know, individual interviews and kind of that whole, you know, palette of, you know, range of information that we can get by, you know, really going out and doing a deep reach into the community, say, "What do you think we really should do with downtown?" So you will get the people who will come out, who have the immediate concerns, to a meeting like this and say, "Look, you know, I've been here, I've been, my voice is being heard," but there are other people who are not, you know, who are, you know, contacting us by email because they can't come, contacting us in different ways, phone calls, in-person, you know, deals. I had a breakfast meeting this morning at the Glenwood, and then, you know, the, one of the managers sits down at my table before my guest arrives and says, "Well, can I talk to you about downtown? Can I talk to you about this? Can I talk about ...?" So we need to have a better way of being able to gather that information and then process that information. And I will point out, you know, to Council Brown's point, we're not buying anything yet. We haven't decided what we want to buy in terms of, you know, what we're going to invest our money in, in terms of the park blocks, what we do with Keyzee Square. We're just opening up these conversations. We are not having, you know, anything set yet. So I suggest that we take advantage of the three, you know, yeah, I know, George, but I mean, that, you know, we have the 3:00 PM department at the University of Oregon, we've got the architecture department, we have private consultants in this community, and, you know, maybe we need to take a step back and really look deeper at other things and other ideas that may be brought to the table that have not surfaced yet. So that's kind of my suggestion around this issue.
Chris?
Yeah, I think it's an interesting conversation about what is the value of information and where that information comes from. And I don't, I didn't expect this to be statistically reliable information. It was never presented as statistically reliable. And as Greg says, if you want to do something statistically reliable, you need to embark on a formal research project. But does that make this information invaluable? And as long as you understand where it came from and what it represents, I think it can be informative, which is back to the point of, are we informed or are we bound by what we learn? None of this binds us in any way, and I think as long as we say, "I'm not bound, but I can be informed, I can be ..." This could be part of creating the fuller picture. You can then put many things together and look for the trends. And that then raises the other point about what value does this information have? And to me, asking the public for their perspective on something is very valuable if you're asking them directional information about their aspirations, or what priorities, or what kinds of things we should do, what we should do. I think it's very valuable to have input from the community in a host of different ways, to help guide us in terms of what we should do. But in a past life, when I used to do research, it was very difficult to ask people how to do that, because if you go and ask just the general person in the public, "Talk to me about funding options," they may not understand even a fraction of what the funding opportunities are. That's where you need to bring in the certified smart people and the experts who can then talk about how to do it. But I still think it's very valuable for us and the community to set the priorities, the what to do, and then we find the expertise to figure out how to do it. I think this forum was very good at helping us to capture that, well, what should we be focusing on? What kinds of things are important? What are the things that should help us inform the decisions which, I agree, we will be making, but they need to be informed? Sometimes our community will tell us what we should be doing, and it's not something that I would necessarily say, but I still have to recognize it's what the community wants to do. But I don't expect the community to be knowledgeable enough or have studied the issue long enough to be able to tell me how to do it. I don't even know how to do it. I don't know how wide a driveway needs to be, or how wide a street needs to be in a certain circumstance, but I do know that you need a street, and the street needs to be there. So I think that division of knowledge makes it able to be used in an effective way. This information is useful that way, and when you put it together with other information we've learned, you begin to see trends. And a lot of the information from this survey ties into the trends we've seen in other information we've gathered, which tends to validate it. I agree, you would do a series of focus groups, you don't do just one. And you don't just do one forum and then say, "This is going to tell us what to do." But put it all together, and there is some value there.
George Polley?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with what a lot has already been said about the information gathered and how it's gathered, and we all know, we're still getting emails from people about what their opinions are about what should happen to downtown. But I want to comment about the fact that I put this motion out was not to put a funding mechanism in place. The reason why I did it the way we did it is to respect Councilor Zalinka's request to not take any action. All this is a placeholder, and if you were listening when I put the motion out, when I was discussing, I said, "If we decide to go down this way," because this is a time-sensitive issue, I wanted to make sure it came back to council in a timely manner, so we at least have the opportunity to discuss it. It's a placeholder. That's all it is at this point. It's not the direction we're taking. In fact, you know, we were given a list of funding options at our previous meetings, and John, you sent out an email yesterday afternoon with some that we haven't even heard of yet. So there's a lot more discussion as to the funding mechanisms, how we're going to improve the downtown park blocks, how we're going to do the fiber optic, you know, and if we decide to sell Keyzee Square, we can use that money to do some of the other improvements in the park blocks. That's another discussion. I mean, we're not even anywhere close, I don't think, in making a decision how we're funding this. So to characterize my motion as we already have something in place that's totally wrong, and it's just a placeholder at this point.
Second round, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor said something during the video up there that I thought was really interesting, something. I used to say the same thing, only with a different little twist, before we've all done so much work downtown, and you have, to make it better. I started having an office down there in 2000 and did for about 12 and a half years. And I used to say, too, that, you know, downtown should be our living room and not our bathroom. And I thought that was funny at the time. But it's now our living room, and she's right. But it needs to be everybody's living room. And the reason I brought up the representative piece before is because I agree with Claire too. This table is very representative of our community and its, you know, differing points of view. But there are some parts of our community that we don't ever ask them for their opinion. In West Eugene and North Eugene, there are a lot of folks who at least feel that way. I asked about this because if we have a public forum and folks come, that's good information, it's reasonable information, but it's all, as Chris mentioned, but it's almost always provided by people who we regularly hear from anyway. Our Monday night meetings often have a lot of people with strong feelings about downtown, and we hear that frequently. So we're well-versed in those opinions. But there are a whole host of people whose opinions and ideas we never hear, and I'm really interested, before we fix our living room for the whole town, that we hear from the whole town in their opinions. There are, I mean, I don't want to say a negative, you know, but there are a lot of people in, at least in my part of the community, who are not comfortable at all coming downtown the way it even exists today. And so I just want to have some caution before we act to do anything with regard to the park blocks, anything that's, you know, not economic development-related, but more aesthetically related, that we really get behind, what would a grand majority of our community like to see downtown like? Excuse me, if I could, I just have one more, for example. There was a previous council, when I was first seated, where I made a comment about this kind of subject, about downtown, and I said, "I can't think of any of my neighbors who wouldn't rather have downtown look like Oakway Center." That was what I said at the time. And I remember a previous councillor who's not at the table now saying that they found Oakway Center offensive, because it was elitist, I think, was that councillor's point. And that's okay. That's their point of view, that's perfectly fine. But I would like to have those folks in North Eugene that I was speaking about at least represented in this process. Thanks.
Claire, and then we're going to switch.
Sure. Thanks. So just to also call out, you know, I think another purpose of the forum was to see if we could identify a handful of small things that we might implement without huge cost or effort that would demonstrate some progress, and I don't know if we accomplished that, but I'm definitely not interested in rushing to a decision to make a series of big changes. I think our discussion about the, you know, potential for urban renewal and what might happen with Keyzee Square, I think those are big conversations, but I think what we were looking for, we had some hope that we might find some small things that I think could be agreed upon by a majority of folks in the community. But some other thoughts I had was, I had the opportunity to visit Nashville last year, and in the course of this conference, we were encouraged to go out into the city and take various pictures, and we happened to have a conversation with a gentleman we thought was a police officer, but he said no. In fact, he was a non-sworn officer who was a peace officer of a kind. So he was a little, he was employed by the city, so unlike the downtown guides we have now, he wasn't employed by a third party, but he wasn't a police officer with a gun and all the duties of a police officer. But he was there just to make sure folks were having a good time and getting along and feeling good about being in downtown Nashville. And so I was wanting to share that with staff as a potential model we might look at. I don't know, you know, what the cost of that is. And then in terms of potential funding, you know, I would be interested in looking to see if DEI has, could increase their capacity to support some new efforts downtown. We are potentially going to talk about putting parking meters back into parts of downtown that we took them out of, and I would like to include that revenue as a potential investment, reinvestment in some of these improvements. And then I think I mentioned before that, you know, if we want to put in benches and perhaps some new restrooms, that there might be sponsorship opportunities for downtown businesses to sponsor a bench or sponsor a facility. So those are some ideas that came to me as a result of that forum and other input that we've had. And then I just had a, wanted to, at some point, if not right now, get an update on the status of our downtown police staffing, our downtown patrol, and what cahoot service is dedicated to downtown.
If you can provide that.
Great. Thank you, everybody. The only other comment I would make as we transition is, when we heard our, the information that we gleaned from parks, a lot of the same issues came up in that discussion about restrooms, about benches, about lighting, similar kinds of things that people want in places that they are wanting to spend time, and I think those were heard from all, people from all over the city, from parks all over the city. So there is some shared information. It comes up over and over again about what people think we need to have. We're going to switch to the second part of the meeting now.
I'll just jump in really quickly, but I don't want to take too much time. This is a continuation of the downtown improvements discussion, which generally is downtown fiber and parks blocks, open space. Both of those are on parallel tracks. I think the two tracks are really, what do we want to do and how do we want to pay for it? And the fiber is a little bit further down the track, I think, in both regards, really. We have a plan. It's a first-phase implementation plan. We have some ability, I think, to generate some funding to at least address an incremental approach to that project. May not be able to do the whole thing, but depending on what funding sources are available. So some ideas have come forward about an incremental approach, and we're happy to share that, but generally, it basically means keep moving that forward, and let's get as far as we can using local, state, federal funding, whatever we can do, whatever we can identify now to keep that project moving forward. The park blocks is not as far down the tracks in any regard, in either regard. We're not quite sure what we want to do, whether it's just the park blocks or other open space, but I think the process is still incremental. And, you know, the, one of the increments we talked about is community engagement and figuring out, how do we start that discussion with the community to come up with a plan? And we mentioned Project for Public Spaces as an opportunity. We've reached out to them. They provided kind of a rough scope, if that's where we wanted to start, if we could start on a public engagement plan and open space plan for either the park blocks or parks blocks plus. And the range of services that they might buy, as far as cost, is about $100,000 to $200,000 range that they have indicated. That might be a place to start that council considered, might consider, although we don't have an identified source. Obviously, there's no predetermined outcome. We're not quite sure what the community ultimately tells us they want to happen with the open space, so that would be something that we'd have to continue to work on incrementally to figure out what the best tool is. Our role really, at this point, is to try to provide you with the best information about what's the basket of tools. Urban renewal is just one of those. It's just a tool, it's not an outcome. It's been used a lot for, you know, projects in the past, like the library, you know, you're going to be looking at using it for the, you have Riverfront, but it's just a tool. There's other ways that possibly you could look at these projects as well, so.
Want to just open it up to discussion now? I've got.
I've got, I'll put George in the queue. Anybody else in the queue?
Alan.
Alan, you want to be in the queue on this?
I think I heard him beep off.
Okay.
No, he says connected.
So go ahead, George.
Thank you, Mayor. So you just mentioned...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you just mentioned that there's, you've looked at some funding for incremental steps forward that we could do that is practicable? Is that correct? Did I hear you say that right?
The approach you could consider would be looking at whatever sources of general fund might be available, and we haven't identified those yet. We would try to pursue state, there's some state funding opportunities, potentially. There's some funding opportunities through the federal government, through EDA, which are potential. And we could start working on those immediately with the hopes of securing as much as possible. And based on how much we can secure, we'll really determine that first increment or that first phase of how far we can get. But our thoughts are that this is a path to at least start and keep that project moving forward. It's really important for E-Web to be able to schedule the installation with their crews, and that's very challenging. That's going to be a scheduling dilemma, that's an important part of the project. So the more we can do now to know and create some certainty around at least getting started, I think that would eliminate the delays that I think council expressed some concerns about speed and delays in the broadband fiber project, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, I think you should do that. I think that's an excellent idea, to see what we can, what the other funding sources are. The things I've been thinking, the reason I asked about the full faith and credit bond is because we've used it before, and it doesn't, and it's not on the taxpayer. It's not a GO bond, or it's not a tax levy, it's not anything like that. So it's not going to raise anybody's taxes. You, of course, have to know what the funding sources will be to repay it. And I've written down some ideas that I'd just like to throw out there. We could use, when the downtown urban renewal district sunsets, puts a million dollars to the general fund every year, a portion of that could be used. I'm not saying use the whole thing. I don't think it's all going to come from one source, unless council approves this, you know, very nebulous and very vague extension of the downtown urban renewal district. So part of it could come, and there are many other needs that the city has. I mean, we need, we need to really step up our efforts for homelessness, for instance. And everyone can think of things to spend money on, worthy things. Part of it could come from the, first of all, you figure out how long the term of the bond would be. Would it be a four-year bond, five-year bond, six, whatever? What are the interest payments? What are the yearly payments on principal and interest? Figure that out, get a general idea. All right, so part of it could come from the $1 million infusion to the general fund from the, when the downtown urban renewal district sunsets. Part of it could come from telecom funds. Part of it, I think the beneficiaries of the service should kick in. I'm willing to, for our business, if I saw a plan, how much it would cost. So that would be a part of it. We haven't yet seen the revenue forecast, but my guess is that we will see increased property taxes going into the general fund this year. Lots of big projects were completed, new apartment buildings are being occupied, they're on the tax rolls now, they weren't before. It's my understanding that the Veterans Clinic is property is going to be paying taxes, because it's not owned by the federal government, it's owned by, they're just leasing it from a private party. They're going to have to pay income tax. So we're going to see, I'm, you know, unless something happens between now and springtime, we're going to see a bump in property tax revenues into the general fund. There's also, the Riverfront Urban Renewal District overlaps this planned area.
Thank you, George.
It's just a small part, but that, some of the money...
Thank you, George.
...proportionally could come from the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, so.
I don't have anyone else in the queue. Does anyone else want in the queue? You want to go again?
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead now, then I'll put you in.
George mentioned a million dollars for letting the district expire. Is that pretty accurate?
Generally, that's what we have forecasted, I guess.
While the district exists, there's, based on the capping of the initial rate at the creation of the district, or the initial assessments at the beginning of the district, that's the gap between original assessment today, plus another chunk of money that's today, that goes elsewhere. Can you tell me about elsewhere, and how much it is?
Do you want to do that, or do you want me to? Are you asking...
The increment above original cast assessment.
Okay.
Where, how much is that annually? Where does it go right now?
It's about $2 million that goes into the downtown urban renewal district.
Right, so that other million, more or less, right?
Right.
Would otherwise go to...
Yes. The schools, so 4J, Layton SD, LCC, and Lane County.
So how much of that, how much of what you're saying would go to schools is covered with backfill from the state right now?
Most of it. So you may...
So in other words, it really wouldn't change what schools get, right?
Well, you may recall, when we did the Plan Amendment in 2010, we had the tax assessor do some calculations, because it's, you have to actually look at every individual tax bill to be able to answer that question. And back in 2010...
Rough it up for me, yeah.
Back in 2010, the answer was that schools would actually lose money if tax increment collections were to cease. And that is because, a couple of things would happen. One is, they would get more property taxes in their permanent rate, but as you pointed out, there's a school funding formula that means that most of that money goes outside of Eugene to school districts all around the state.
So I want to just repeat that point. If we end the district, schools will get less money?
If we, yes, if we cease tax increment collections, yes. Schools will get, well, I didn't finish. So the first thing is, there'll be more property taxes, but that mostly won't benefit 4J. The second thing is...
May I apologize, just so it's an iterative discussion. That money will go to the state? Where will that money go?
It goes, the state has a school funding formula, and that gets distributed to schools all around the state. So if all else is equal, and more money goes into that pot, and the state determines to distribute that, they would distribute it based on their formula, which means that 4J would get a very small piece of it.
Got it. So how much of that extra million are we talking about? 80%? 90%? What are we talking about? The backfill number?
Can I, can I finish my explanation?
Well, yes, but I'm trying to make a specific point, and I need your help to make it, okay?
And if you let me finish, I might be able to help you with that. Because I think I know what your point is.
I thought this was going somewhere else than I wanted it to go, that's why I...
Second piece is, 4J has a local option levy, and that is outside of the school funding formula. And so if tax increment collections were to cease, the amount of money that 4J would collect in their local option levy would be reduced, and that would be an actual reduction in their budget, okay? And when we did this in 2010, the net difference between those two factors was a loss of just under $200,000, so.
Per year?
Per year, to 4J's budget, a loss. So even though they get more property taxes in their permanent rate, they actually lose money in their local option levy. So we've asked the assessor to update that analysis for us for this year, and we're in the process of, you know, having some conversation about that. So we should be able to provide you with an updated estimate soon.
Okay. Back to where I was going with this, though, was if that money that would otherwise go to the schools is going to go to the state because of the fact that the state backfills now, so they're just going to stop doing that, right?
I don't know what they'll do. That's, the legislature decides.
Well, under, all things being equal, and the same rate structure from the state stays in place, they'll stop backfilling if we end the district, correct?
If...
To the same proportion.
Tax increment collections end, and 4J gets more property taxes in its permanent rate, that money would become part of the resources available for the state to distribute, and they would get to decide how to do that. Either have that be an incremental addition to how much they distribute, or maybe they would take other state revenues away and not distribute more. So I don't know how they would decide.
So let me ask that question a different way.
Okay.
We have the choice, right now, of using that money that we're collecting for tax increment financing towards redoing our downtown, or letting the state essentially do something else with the equivalent dollars. Is that correct?
It could be, depending on what the legislature decides to do with those dollars.
I saw Sarah shaking her head. Why is it that you would think that was probably true?
Because I'm shaking, like, I understand what you're asking. I get it.
Okay.
I wasn't shaking that you were, sorry.
The reason I'm asking these questions, the reason I'm asking these questions is because I want us to make an intelligent equivalent choice here. I don't want us to make a false choice. If we're saying, well, gosh, if we shut down the tax increment, if we shut down the urban renewal district, the schools will get a bunch of money, because it isn't true.
Mike, my suggestion is, you let us bring back, at one of your future meetings, and it could be on February 8th, a chart that sort of shows what you're talking about.
Okay.
And so, because we're, there's the million dollars that the general fund gets, but then there's this other million, and so I think it gets confusing. We can produce a chart that will show, and it will have some caveats, that we don't know what the legislature's going to do.
Right.
But then, it will either make your point or not make your point, but at least everybody's clear about...
I was asking, actually, as a function of policy, not specific dollars, so.
Equalization.
I was trying to make a separate point, so.
Equalization.
I would love to have that information come back to us, so we can make it in very specific dollar arguments. But I still didn't get really to the policy question that I was asking, that I'm trying to drill down on. Could I have another round if we have it, please?
I need to sign off, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Bye.
Bye. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, let's see that information. Got to remember that Lane SD is denied a significant amount of money, and they're, you know, underfunded usually anyway, and that, that would be really beneficial for them to get the money that's currently being diverted. Also, Lane County could use it. It's a smaller amount, but as we all know, the county's in dire financial condition, they would be happy to get that money. I'd like to go back to the map. Now, in spite of what everyone said, it seems to me like the downtown urban renewal district Plan Amendment to expand the district and the borrowing capacity and lengthen it, is this is being fast-tracked. People are just, oh, this is just an option, this is just an option. We're going to vote on it in our next meeting in two weeks. That's the only option. Well, we'll look at all these other things, and, oh, and we'll have, you know, we'll have some more focus groups and some more community meetings about the park blocks. But that's on here, it's already on here, it's one of the options. So I think we ought to just talk about, let's separate some of these things out. It's easier to get a grasp, wrap our minds around smaller, more discreet things, instead of, when everything's lumped together, it's very easy to get confused, and it gets foggy, and it gets mushy. So according to the way I read this is, the urban renewal district would expand, and they would pay for the fiber optic. But if you look at your maps, you see that the downtown urban renewal district is only a portion of the fiber area study zone. And the downtown urban renewal funds can only be spent in the district. They can't be spent across the street over here with these guys. They're eliminated from the funding. Same here. Same in here. Same here to the north. Hey, too bad, you don't get the fiber. We have an equity component about this whole thing, too. You know, there are a lot of businesses around town who work out of their homes, and they're internet-based. When will they see the fiber? When will the people that live over here, across Lincoln, when will they get to see the fiber over there? There's lots of businesses ringing all around downtown, and they're in what used to be single-family homes, and they're occupied by businesses. There's probably several hundred of them. When will they get it? When will a home-based fiber business in Beaufort get it? Or at Howie 99? You know? So we're talking about millions of dollars here, and there's, I think there's definitely an equity question. I'll need another round. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The answer directly to your question, George, too, is an interesting one. With a 100-gig capacity system, you can put a stick on the top of downtown, building downtown and broadcast our city wireless free, and have a map that's really quite shocking to you, I would think, in terms of its coverage capacity. It would expand our city downtown free Wi-Fi to such an extent as to be surprising to most because of its power. I think that's actually a reason to do it. So the answer to your question is, all of those folks they'd have it to, as I understand it. My questions around the district are really about the policy questions involved, because that's what we're arguing about. And what I'd hate to see is for the answer of how best to finance this worthy project get bogged down in people's preconceived notions, because this is a complicated subject. I'd rather have, not simple answers to questions, but answers that are easily enough understood by most people, even if you have to kind of, say, in general terms, talk about the policy. So in general terms, if we don't use tax increment financing money that is above the city amount that we talked about, that money essentially won't just go to schools. It will go to schools, but the state will stop giving the schools that money. So as you've said, if we close the district, it's at least likely, the schools may lose a little bit of money in that process. And it's also likely that that money will just go back to the state, and this community won't see any access to using it. So the choice kind of boils down as a policy question, too. Would we like to use that money, more or less extended by the state, to benefit our economy in our downtown Eugene? Or would we just like to return it to the state? That, to me, seems like the more accurate question politically when considering this district. So I'm just trying to ask questions that get towards the details of this, okay?
Betty?
Thanks. I want to add to that, or would we like to share that money with the county that is desperately in need of money, as well as with schoolchildren in other parts of the state?
That's why I was asking for the numbers.
Here.
Thank you. So, you know, I'm interested in finding ways to fund this fiber optic program downtown, because if we don't do that, nobody in the city's going to be able to access that system beyond the three or four buildings that are already connected to it. So my interest isn't to just have it come downtown and then we're done. It's the leverage to expand this fiber optic access, which, again, I view as a form of a public utility, to all residents of Eugene. And that would be a huge economic boon to many, many folks, including the folks that George mentioned, who are running businesses out of, you know, former, single-family housing, and other folks who work out of their homes. And unlike a Wi-Fi transmission, fiber optics doesn't get loaded up with multiple users. A Wi-Fi is going to be limited in how many people can use it at once, as we heard from some of our downtown businesses. So that's, for me, a really key factor in us even considering making this investment in downtown. I would definitely like to see an updated analysis of the urban renewal district and what impact it will have on our local budgets if it expires. And I think there's another way to look at that equity issue, too, in terms of who pays for this expansion of the downtown fiber optics. I know the argument is made that we're keeping taxes from going to other jurisdictions or to our own general fund through this urban renewal financing, but also if we put the fiber optics out to a bond or a general levy, then everyone in town is going to be paying that. And they may not be interested in doing that for downtown. So I think there's more than one way to view the equity piece in terms of who you're asking to pay for what, and what's the benefit to downtown, and how does that benefit downtown that expand to the rest of our community? So those are the things I'm thinking about as I consider what direction I'd like to support in terms of funding these, I think, very important projects.
And I guess the other equity piece really goes down to that broken record thing I say, is that the reason we're trying to build our economy is so that every family in our community will do better, and everyone, and we lift our boat, which has been below for a long... for a long, 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 long time. So, it isn't about doing a favor for anybody. This is really about trying to build our capacity as a community for everyone to be able to take care of their own needs, raise their own kids, and do well. And that's what we really care about. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would certainly be interested to get more information about the tower that Council Clark was talking, speaking of earlier. My understanding is that in this zone, all the buildings have to be hooked up physically with fiber by UWA. They have to be connected physically, not broadcast from a tower. So, and I'm still interested in seeing, I don't know the exact number, but it was something like 150 buildings are going to be hooked up. I still want to see a list of who the lucky ones are, or if that's larger, then who loses out? Because I think people are going to be really interested to know, well, gee, the building across the street got it. Why aren't we on the list? I think that's really important. I'm not opposing this project. I hope nobody gets that idea, but it's just how are we going to pay for it in an equitable and sensible way without seriously compromising other goals that the city has? And I'd kind of like to say a word about, you know, and I agree that we should move forward on it in a timely fashion, but I really, you know, the sky is not falling. We can take our time here, and I don't mean take our time just because I want to delay it, but I think we can take our time here and more fully examine all the options. I don't see a whole bunch of tech companies packing up and leaving Eugene, filling up the station wagon and heading down to Silicon Valley. They started here. They started here. Why did they start here? Because it's a great town. We have a great town. It's a neat place. That's why they started their company here, rather than go, "Oh, hey, I'm going to start a tech company." Well, I'm going to go to wherever, Nashville, whoever has the fiber optic. There's probably lots of places. I'm going to go there because we don't have it. They're happy to be here now. Should we make this improvement? Yes, we could, but I don't see a lot of people bailing to fiber optic towns simply because it might take us a few more months, not years, but a few more months to come up with a sensible, equitable, fiscally responsible plan. I really, I just don't see that happening. So, I'd like to see staff come up with more options to, for instance, funding a full faith and credit bond. I think we, I think we need to discuss that. I think that might be a really good way to go, as long, of course, there has to be backstop funding. And for previous projects, the general fund was, or the downtown urban renewal district was used for the parking garage at Broadway and so, in Charlton. So, you know-
Thank you. Mike?
Okay. I will ask staff to respond to an assertion I just heard from my good friend, whom I respect. But have you ever heard someone threaten that they might have to look elsewhere if we can't find sufficient internet speed? I think there have been several locally grown companies who have said, without sufficient speed, they will have to look to go elsewhere. I think staff backs that up as having received those communications, and it's not just important that we put ourselves in position to be one of very, very few in the country like ours, which would help our current growth rate of jobs, good jobs, well-paying jobs, increase. But it would stop the opposite effect, which is increasing the employment in Portland.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, and I'd like to tag on to what Counselor Clark just said in a couple of different respects. It is true, you know, companies are portable these days. They could set up in New Zealand, and they do. It doesn't matter where they want to go. They could pick up and leave, and we've already seen that here. Hynix picked up and left. You know, Sony picked up and left for various reasons. The nature of their business changed, whatever the case may be, but nobody is married to bricks and mortar in a particular city anymore. What they're married to is they're married to the infrastructure that the city and other entities provide. So, that is a critical piece to this. The other thing leading to that, too, is this. People out in my ward are not going to support increasing taxes for investment that they're not going to get demonstrable benefit from. And I think that's true with a number of other wards in the city. Counselor Clark, Counselor Polin, Counselor Pryor, because what happens is the discussions are focused in specific areas of Eugene, and we knew they need to have those discussions about downtown, and we knew they had discussions about South Eugene. But let me say this. When you go to the ballot box and people say, "What am I going to get out of this?", they're going to look at you and say, and they go look at me as they always do and say, "I don't see where we're getting any benefit in Bethel on this." But if we invest in high-speed fiber now in the city's core, that 100 gigabytes is going to benefit a whole bunch of people, not just in Eugene, but Springfield and in the metro area. And so, I can go back to my people and say, "Guess what? You're going to have high-speed, reliable internet access that will enhance your business and personal use in this community. You have a demonstrable benefit that you can take away from the table for your investment." And that's something that I can take back to my people and sell to my people. But, you know, some of this other stuff, not so much. Let's say, "We don't go downtown. We don't care what happens to Keesey Square, or we don't care what happens on the park blocks, because we don't want to access it now. We don't feel it's accessible for us now anyway." So, I think that we need to keep in mind that we have a whole city, not just a part of a city.
Claire?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate those comments, Counselor Evans. So, I wanted to ask the city manager a little bit about an email you sent out to us yesterday that's relevant to this discussion, and I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting your email correctly. It seemed to me that you were offering us a way that we might go forward with the fiber optics, or say we'd like to go forward with the fiber optics program while we still figure out the major funding mechanism, and that there were some options for kind of backstopping that, at least the initial phases of the project. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, I can talk just a little bit more about that, then please feel free to weigh in a little bit more. Part of the challenge, of course, we always have is the funding source, not the actual mechanism, or even the full faith and credit. It can be a very valuable way to do it, but as you mentioned, you have to actually have the funding source to be able to pay that back. But the idea was, is that in the urban renewal district conversation, we will either have an urban renewal district or we won't in any numbers of months for any various reasons. But what we can do is we can proceed right now, because whether the urban renewal district stays in place or doesn't stay in place, if we create a, there's a funding source sometime in the future that we could then pay back an internal loan, or however Sue and her team chooses to fund something like that. So, the idea of that is, is yes, we could continue now to keep moving forward, and then we would ensure that we would have some funding source in the future, be able to pay that back. To move forward now, Sue could answer this, we may need to come back to council and actually appropriate some dollars or a financing mechanism, so you would have to take some action, but we could do that now while there's still further conversation either here or in the community about urban renewal districts or other financing mechanisms. Anything you want to add?
So, well, I appreciate you giving us that option, because I do share the concern that Counselor Clark raised, that if some of our tech companies, if they don't see some assurances that this is going to expand, they will relocate, and we will lose those jobs. I think that is a fact. And if we are going to have a big political debate about the urban renewal district, and that's going to cast a doubt on whether or not the fiber optics program is going to get the support I think it needs from the city, then we might have people making that decision this week. So, I'm encouraged to know that we might have some other options on moving forward, giving assurances that that project can move forward while we engage in the important debate about how we fund that over the long term.
And what I would add is, is actually, the end result of that debate wouldn't impact our ability to continue to move forward.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
I want to say, I think that's a really important piece of information to get out, because if, I don't know whether, if you decide to expand the, extend the urban renewal district, and if you do, whether you will make a decision here or make the decision to send it to the voters. I don't know that at this point, but I do know that the message you do not want to give the public is, if you don't support this, then we're not going to do it, because you don't want them to feel like you're holding that over their heads, and that, in fact, if you did send it to the voters and they said no, that you would give them the notion that then you weren't going to do it, because I think what you want to say is, we're going to do this. How fast we can do it, how smoothly we can do it depends on the resources we have at hand, but our intention is, is to do this. And I think we all have to come to a place of making that clear, so we don't get this mixed message out there that will come back to bite us as a, as a community and with our tech people and with our citizens in general.
I think that's an important message, not just for the companies that are here. We talked about possible losing companies, but as many of you mentioned, that if we don't have high-speed fiber in the next, in the next couple of years, if we have it, it's an asset. If we don't have it in the next couple of years, it's a liability for us. And so, part of it is, is absolutely keeping companies here, but the other part of that is, we have a very energetic tech cluster, and we wouldn't want to do something that sort of help, that trips them up. There's a lot of energy and momentum, and so we want to continue with that, so.
Denny?
Oh, thank you. Actually, I thought we were through talking, but I want to say something. I think Denny already told us that there are other ways to pay for this, and I was relying on that, but I want to respond to what Greg said about people wanting, thinking that something doesn't benefit them. I do think that people will vote for things that do not benefit them personally. If they didn't, we wouldn't have a school system. There are lots of people who have no children who still want good schools, and we wouldn't have public parks, maybe, if everybody only voted for something that would benefit them. That's all. Thank you.
I wish that were more and more true. Yes, George?
I'd like to go back to something that Claire asked the city manager about, and you said that the intention is to keep moving forward on this, which I think is a good idea, but I don't know exactly what that means. I mean, how do we move forward, and what's that going to cost? I mean, and then fund, figure out how to fund it later, which I'm, I think is wise. I mean, I don't, I think this plan is too simplistic, and I think we can do this, and I think we, I don't know of a counselor that's opposed to this. I mean, Counselor Link is not on the phone anymore, but he supports it. I think we all support it at this table. It's just these other questions I feel need to be resolved, and I think that, frankly, this really only came up, what, less than a month ago or a month ago, and it's just moving very quickly, and I think the council needs more information. I think we can do it, and I, I don't know if I can send to staff later this list of options that I just read out-
Yeah, please move forward.
-to backstop a full faith and credit bond. So, I'm curious about a list of, and I'm sure you checked this out to some degree when you were researching all this before you brought the initial packet to us, but I'm just curious about, I'd like to see a list of cities that have a fiber optic network, like what we're talking about installing, an extensive one like that, either in their, you know, it may not even be in their downtown. It was going to depend on where their tech industries are clustered, which may not be in the downtown. It may be peripheral, you know, in a light industrial area or a campus, you know, tech campus area. And I'm going to be curious to know how they paid for it, if that information's available. And I can spend the time and research individual cities, but that would be, let's not try to reinvent the wheel. Let's look and see how other cities funded this. And we've got lots of options, and I'm positive we can come up with a good package that will make sense. But that would be nice to know how they paid for it, and then I've heard that there are cities where the high-speed internet covers the whole town. So, I'd like to see a list of those cities, and same thing. And, I mean, I'm assuming you probably already have some of this information. Won't be new research, but, and then again, how do they pay for it? You know? We ought to ask all these other places and see, because, you know, I'm sure there's cities out there that are in the same, not we are financially, just, you know, coming out of the recession, starting to look good, but not where we want to be yet by any means, but trending positively, you know? And so, if we could get some of that information, too, I think that would be very useful. Thank you.
Okay. I think that does it for today. Thank you all.
Thank you.